My sin not in pride, but the home. Is nailed to the cross and I bear it no more. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, oh my soul. It is well. It is well. With my soul. With my soul. It is well, it is well with my soul. It is well. It is well. With my soul. It is well. It is well. With my soul. With my soul. It is well, it is well with my soul. It is well, it is well with my soul.
Holy Spirit, thou art welcome in this place. Holy Spirit, thou art welcome in this place. Omnipotent Father of mercy and grace, thou art welcome in this place. So that's the fifth time I've led you in that this summer and yet I still have not got an invitation to join the choir. There may be good reason for that, we're not sure, but there we go. So, good afternoon and welcome to this church family meeting. Thanks to whoever set up for lunch and thanks to the folks that ordered pizza and salad, we're grateful for that and it was wonderful. I've asked Courtney Hilbert to open us in prayer and wherever she went, there she is. They stole the microphone. You'll have to use your outdoor voice.
If you're willing to take the hand of a person beside you? Hello?
She's not going upstairs.
Hello? I don't... Hello? Okay. If you're up to it, please take the hand of the person beside you and bow your heads in preparation with me. Preciously, Father, we just ask you to bless our words today. We know the power of words. You are the Word that spoke creation into being. Help us to use wisdom, to use our words with grace, gentleness, and discernment. Open our lips to words that are from you and close our mouths that are not of you. Holy Father, send your Holy Spirit. Send your Holy Spirit to anoint each and every person in this place, those who will watch online. Open our hearts to your wisdom, to your fruitfulness, to your gentleness, to your kindness, and to your grace. Allow our ears to be open to your message. Allow our eyes to see you and your will. Soften our hearts to take in your grace. Holy Father, transform our words to words of your will for this body at this church that is one fraction of the greater body of Christ. So that we may know the forward way you wish us to go, fueled not by our own individual will, but by the will that is lit by your holy light. Carry us, Father, so that each person in this room and in this church body might feel the tightness of your embrace, holding you, holding each of us on this roller coaster. So that we know with each turn, with each hill, with each twist, that you are there, holding our hands, holding our shoulders, and embracing us fully, carrying us along the way. Help us to meet this challenge, knowing that the path ahead of us is blessed by your will, by your grace, and by your transformation, transforming love. In your precious Holy Son's name, amen.
Thank you, Courtney. So there are two handouts that you should have gotten as you came in. One is the PowerPoint for today. You'll notice that it's much shorter than the PowerPoint from late June. Secondly, in June, I was asked to put into print a comparison of the UMC beliefs versus other viewpoints and the second handout captures that information. I want to be clear that not every viewpoint is held as a group by the folks that we would call progressive or that would be in the other viewpoint category. So I don't want you thinking, "Oh, 50% of people feel this way." No, that's a misrepresentation. But, all the viewpoints that are listed there exist under the umbrella that we call United Methodism. And the other viewpoint group opposes the doctrine that we have agreed to, incumbent to proclaim. So, an overview of our plan today. We're going to do these categories of things. And so I'm just going to ask you to be respectful of the process and just stay with me. We're going to, I'll have some remarks, some corrections, we'll take questions, then we'll have an opportunity for statements and thoughts. And so I just want to share that with you so you kind of know where we're going. To set the stage and to frame our conversation today, I just share some reminders from our first meeting and some remarks. First, we're continuing a conversation today that is very personal. It's a very personal conversation for each and every one of us. It goes to the very root of our individual Christian beliefs. It can be, has been, emotional and confusing for some. I remember that you, I remind you that we may discover that dear friends, people who are part of our faith family, may disagree with the foundational beliefs that we individually hold. I've invited your love and grace into all those moments each time we've met when we discover others don't believe exactly as we do. I remind you that this conversation is not about a group winning and another group losing. It's about trying to discern how God wants to use this group of Christ followers and others that would join us in continuing to build His kingdom in this community. As a final reminder, God already knows what's going to happen. We don't know, and that's what gives us some anxiety and reason to be concerned. Makes us anxious, makes us worry, can make us stressed. But we take comfort that we're walking into God's plan. Second, I've seen my goal enroled in this conversation thus far to educate. We had an informational meeting in late June. We've had speakers from the United Methodist Church, Reverend Roger Grace, an independent pastor, Reverend Tim Burton, formerly UMC, and from the GMC, Global Methodist Church, Reverend Tom Hanover. We provided a variety of internet resources, some found by you folks, and also video presentations from the Global Methodist Church by Reverend Jeff Greenway and the United Methodist Church by District Superintendent Reverend Tim Byas. If you have not looked at all that material, I would encourage you to look at all that material. Yes, it's going to take an investment of time if you haven't been in those meetings or looked at it already, but in order to be well-prepared, properly knowledgeable about the whole topic, I would encourage your review of those materials. Other churches I'm familiar with have not taken the same approach that we're taking. One church's church board simply presented a recommendation to the congregation. The pastors had one presentation and they've scheduled a vote for disaffiliation. One church has had an informational meeting, a UMC representative, a Global Methodist Church representative present. They will now go through a very detailed process to listen to all constituents, evaluate all the responses, then make a recommendation to the leadership board, who will then bring a recommendation to the congregation. Our approach has been different. We've tried to provide you as much information as possible to each of you, either in person or electronically, and I expect that today we will hear where some people stand on the issue. Then we collectively can make a decision to consider disaffiliation or not. From my standpoint, that means we're including all voices that we can so that we can hear all points of view. If for some reason you feel someone needs to guide you on how to vote, then listen for their opinion in a little while. Now, just a thought, some of you might say, "Well, now Jeff, I think this would be a better process," or "That would be a better process." I would suggest to you that your focus is improperly placed. Let's focus on the topic at hand, not the process. If you still think you have a better process, congratulations. The next time we have this type of challenge before us, you can be the lay leader, we're on the leadership team, and we'll do your process. For now, this is the process we're following, and our goal is to give everyone a voice to be heard and enough information to make a decision that is right for them and for the future of this group of Christ believers. Lastly, I think in my reminders, I'll simply make this comment. While you or we might wish that this faith family stayed totally intact after a decision is made, let me be clear that my sense is that that is unlikely. Some folks feel very strongly one way or another. And the decision made by this congregation will determine whether some people continue to make this church their home. Even if we decide to not take a vote, that is a decision to not disaffiliate and this church will remain United Methodist. The fact that the faith family will look different after a decision is changed and may be felt as a loss. That's going to create a grieving process for many, if not all. Many of us will go through elements of the grieving process like shock and denial, pain and guilt, anger, depression, reflection, and acceptance. So, I would tell you, prepare for that. Next, I want to just make some corrections and some updates here. So, in the United Methodist Church presentation, there was a statement made that nothing will change structurally in a post-separation United Methodist Church. I offer the following that would dispute that. Already, the West Ohio Conference has reduced the number of district superintendents, assigning, in our case, both the Capital Area South and Capital Area North districts to one district superintendent. That means double the work for Reverend Tim Byas. A complete redistricting of the West Ohio Conference is scheduled to be completed on July 1st of '23. Additionally, common sense would say that if there's a 10, a 5, a 10, a 20% reduction in the membership of the United Methodist Church, something's going to change. Conference and district budgets will change to reflect that membership reduction, it's just going to happen. Additionally, it is possible, and some would say likely, that theology will change. No one can be sure, we can't predict the future, and the topic is one that is absolutely rich for speculation. And currently, it is a fact that the United Methodist Church in the West Ohio Conference has difficulty filling pastors' positions currently with fully ordained elders. How that would change in a post-separation United Methodist Church is difficult to predict, but the number of churches disaffiliating, it's a moving target, I can't tell you what it means. My point is, there's evidence to say there will be structural changes to the UMC and already have been. Our independent presentation, I have no real corrections about this presentation, just a couple comments. First, the previous Trinity United Methodist Church in Pickerington had a very unique situation, in my opinion. That congregation was ready to disaffiliate even before Pastor Burton arrived. And the fact that they had a 100% vote to disaffiliate is absolutely remarkable, but gives a sense of how ready they were. Second, the fact that three other churches joined them is also remarkable and very unique. I believe it is unlikely that that can be repeated. If God chose to do that here, I got no problem with it, but I don't see it as likely. Someone asked Pastor Burton that day if he thought that the other churches would have joined them had they been and continued to be United Methodist. He didn't really answer the question. But I believe it is a fair statement to say that all three of those churches would not have joined them if they had remained United Methodist. My point there is, their experience of becoming an independent church is somewhat unique and may not be duplicated. What was the Trinity United Methodist Church is now Life City Church in Pickerington. Their website describes itself, quote, "As a spirit-filled Pentecostal collective of believers who are striving to take their next step with Jesus." The website makes no mention of the former United Methodist Church or other churches that came to create Life City. For me, that loss of the Methodist history is sad. That's just a comment. And then the Global Methodist Church presentation, when our conversation here was discussing involvement of members of the queer community in the Global Methodist Church, it was reported that the Global Methodist Church policy of not allowing members of the queer community to be married in the church and not allow them to be ordained was an accurate representation. That's the same policy as the United Methodist Church has had since 1968. You'll recall, those of you who were here, that the conversation continued, saying that members of the queer community would be limited from taking leadership positions, including Sunday School teachers and other roles. Checking with other sources that day, as reported by Pastor Mann in an email in late July, it is acknowledged that this was a misrepresentation. The decision about specific involvement of members of the queer community will be in the hands of the local church. And then I think two other things. First, church conference. So, previously I reported that if a decision is made to have a church conference to consider, to hold a vote for disaffiliation, there would be an option for virtual attendance at the church conference and virtual attendees would be able to vote. We have learned since that meeting that the virtual option will not be available for attendance or for voting, and that is a change since the trustees' report of the annual conference in early June. The people who can vote are only persons who are professing members of this congregation, who are in attendance, in person, at that church conference. Those are the only people that get to vote. You'll not be able to vote in advance, you'll not be able to send your vote with someone else, and it is expected to be a secret ballot. Know that if there are 100 professing members in attendance and all cast votes either in favor or against, then 2/3 or 67 affirmative votes would be needed to pass a motion to disaffiliate. If those same 100 professing members are in attendance, six people choose not to cast a vote, five people formally abstain, then 2/3 of the affirmative and negative votes are still needed to pass the disaffiliation motion, which means 2/3 of 89 votes cast, which now means the affirmative has to be 60. We got that clarified from the district superintendent last week. These are not our local standards, these are the standards of the United Methodist Church. And then lastly, in corrections and updates, the unfunded pension liability. Previous number I shared with you was just north of $96,000. In addition to an additional one-year's apportionments, because we are current on our apportionments, of $27,000. This amount for the unfunded pension liability updates every quarter based upon market conditions. So what I reported on June 26th changed on June 30th. And we were told in the last week that that number has actually gone down. So, the newest number for the unfunded pension liability is $69,686, so just think, $70,000. In addition to one-year's apportionments, $27,000, the total, if we disaffiliated today, would be $97,000, give or take. Okay? Now, and don't get excited about that because the number could go up again, it could go down more, we don't know. And the number that would be, the number that we have to deal with is the number at the end of the quarter prior to the annual conference vote on our request to disaffiliate. So, my expectation is our request to disaffiliate would be heard by the annual conference in June of next year, which means that the March 31st information next year would be the most meaningful. So, we can get excited about that. If you're inclined to want to disaffiliate, you'd say, "That's a bargain." Others would say, I would just say, "That's good information, it's nice, but I don't know what it's going to be in March next year." So, and it could go back up to exactly what it was or could go higher. So, that's the story on that, and that's the end of the corrections and updates that I would have for you. Now, we're going to move into two separate pieces of time here. The first is going to be a time for questions and clarifications. This is not a time for oratory about your opinion, okay? I'm saying that with love and grace, okay? Some of us in the past have wanted to do oratory during our question. We'll give you a chance to oratory in a few minutes, okay? But let's work on questions and clarifications first. Then we'll get into statements and thoughts, and that's where you can spend whatever time you feel you need to share what your thoughts are, okay? So with that, I've got microphones in the hands of Larry Hilbert and Keith Babbert, and if they feel like they have a question or something, feel free to bring that forward as well, but there'll be microphones available so everybody here can hear and we can hear you in the recording. So, questions and clarifications. I'm going to do my best to answer the questions about the process, and this is a time for us to understand better what we need to know. So, Brian Johnson has a question.
Okay, here's, sorry, here, okay, here's my two questions. One, just assuming that the church was leaning towards the idea of, if the church voted to disaffiliate, that would be one vote. If the church chose to, and I'm just wanting to understand the process, nothing more. If the church chose to dis affiliate, that would be one vote? And then if the church chose to go a different route, be it independent, global, whatever the case may be, that would be a separate vote, correct?
That would be my best understanding at this point in time. My best understanding is this, is the district superintendent would come to do a church conference, his primary interest is in moving this church through a vote for disaffiliation. That's what we would have called it for. If we chose not to dis affiliate, the vote goes, we don't, he'd say, "Thank you, we're happy to have you stay." If you chose to dis affiliate, he'd say, probably, "Sorry to see you go, Godspeed." But at that point, his interest in what our decision about where we would want to land, or affiliate, if you will, is in our hands. So, I think it ends up being two separate votes is a fair statement. One could even argue, let's, we can take a vote, dis affiliate, and then take a period of time to explore more completely those options that would be available after disaffiliation as to what's the right choice for us. If we don't feel strongly, we want to do one or the other early on. Does that answer it? Did you have a second question or is that all the same? Oh, nice, a two-for-deal, I love that.
Following that, are both of them 2/3s vote?
The first one certainly is.
Yes.
I don't know about an affiliation vote. And here's my comment on that. I don't know, but, just a couple thoughts. See, I didn't ask, I wouldn't think about that, give me a minute. You would no longer be a part of the United Methodist Church, you would no longer be bound by their rules, so you could devise your own voting strategy. One could argue, simple majority, 51%. One could argue, let's have a supermajority so that we're pretty much all in agreement. I would say that's a vote, that's something to have folks consider once we would decide to dis affiliate. How are we going to decide where exactly we would go? So, Jeff?
You said for the unfunded pension liability change, it could go up and down?
Yeah, it's flexible.
What is that, is that based on the stock market or is that just a person in the denomination saying, "Ah, we think it's going to be this much?"
I understand there's a silver dollar that's kept in a safe up there. They pull the silver dollar out and they keep flipping it, no, I'm teasing. I was told what the number was, but there's, I think it's tied to the interest rates at this point in time, because interest rates have gone up in the last two months. There's an expectation that the pensions will do better on their own at this point in time, meaning the unfunded portion would be less over the course of time. So, if you're a fiduciary whiz like Dave Hurdle is, probably you would say, "I get it." And you would read it and make sense to you. For me, I look at it and I go, "Yeah, okay, so they're using some market index of some sort to tie that to." What I believe is, that if interest rates were to fall again, our number would probably go back up. If they were to go up, it may fall, our unfunded pension liability may go down. What I'm just saying is, don't get excited about the number right now because this is not going to be our number if we were to choose to dis affiliate. It would be something different, but I think something in the range of $100,000 is probably a reasonable expectation for the unfunded pension liability. If you're expecting something in the 125, 130 range, I think that's probably reasonable for the disaffiliation process. If it's less, it's less, if it's more, it's more, so. No, 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 no. So, his question is, is it just out of spite that the number changes? The answer is no. That number went down. The number we got when Jonathan asked was, it goes down for all churches across the board, 28% as of the June 30th thing. So, it could be, it could be on the treasury note, I'm not quite sure. So, anyway, somewhere between $100,000 and $130,000 is our best guess at this point in time. It could be 150 by the time we go out, it could be 35, I don't know. Okay, who else? David?
Jeff, I'm a little unclear, if a vote, what's the term we're using?
Dis affiliate?
Dis affiliate. At that time, are we no longer United Methodist or are we no longer United Methodist after the charge comes?
Yeah, you're right. So, you're correct. So what's, at what point are you no longer United Methodist? And you're correct. Once you, once you have a vote for disaffiliation, the next step of that, there's probably some paperwork that I'm not familiar with right now, but the next step would be a vote of the annual conference. There's a special meeting of the annual conference on November 19th this year. I don't believe we're going to have everything ready in time, even if we decided today, we're not going to have everything ready by that date. So the next annual conference meeting will be in early June. A vote at that point has to be made of the annual conference to approve the disaffiliation. In the history of the conference, I'm not aware that at any point they've not allowed a church to disaffiliate. I don't think it's going to change. So it would be a perfunctory step. Now, I would argue that once a church has decided to dis affiliate, I would say, if we're going to choose to affiliate, then I don't think there's anything in the discipline that would say, "Here's what you have to do to affiliate with another denomination." So, we would make up our own vote rule back to what Jenny was asking. But officially, you would stay United Methodist until the annual conference and then a week or so after that before it's finally.
Well, I guess that is the second part of the question. In that period of time, the things that this church does enjoy from the United Methodist Church as far as IRS, as far as some liability, as far as that, would we still have that?
Stay in place.
Until the point of that charge conference?
Correct.
So we would have some period of time after we chose, that we would have some time to make the choice to change if we chose to go to another?
You're correct.
Without being exposed to the, some of the risks that you would have being out on your own.
Correct. That's my understanding, yes. Just looking over here. Angela?
So the viewpoints in, on the right-hand side are just viewpoints. The other comments on here are what currently UMC is, correct?
The left-hand column would be the United Methodist Church beliefs, yes.
Where did these other viewpoints come from?
I have a variety of them and I have them all referenced. I can't spit them out right now, but I do have them all referenced, I checked them all. It's a variety of teachings and writings and things that people have said, both, and Jonathan can answer this better than I probably, but both from the Liberation Methodist Church, which was a very progressive element, and also people who write and have written as part of the United Methodist Church but have hold a very progressive viewpoint. Methodist Church, but have hold a very progressive viewpoint. So, and I've got the references, but I just, I don't have them prepared to spit them out to you.
So, in 2024, there's going to be another
General Conference.
General Conference, and there's going to be a conversation about the doctrine, and whether or not it'll be
Maybe.
Okay. So, I guess I'm just kind of wondering, because these viewpoints are pretty sensational in terms of what, what, what's being said here. And if you look on the left-hand side, it's pretty much, you know, what we have been practicing and have been believing. What's to say that there's going to be such a radical difference in how UMC looks at how they operate, when they've operated under this particular doctrine for so many years? I guess I'm just kind of wondering why there's such sensational viewpoints on the right side, that if we were to stay with UMC, I would, I can't speak for the church, but I would reckon to say, we wouldn't be going with those things that are on the right side.
I, I would agree, yeah.
So, would UMC, has there been conversation about how you would get a choice if you stay with UMC, as to how you're, how, like I said, left versus right, in terms of how you would run the doctrine of your church? I'm just kind of wondering why there's such sensationalism on the right-hand side, it almost feels a little bit, trying to, to, it's a very, yeah, thank you, it's a very extreme viewpoint, that I wouldn't see us, as a collective body, if we stayed with UMC, that we wouldn't embrace any of those things on the right-hand side. Or maybe just a parcel or piece, but some of these are just really out there.
No argument, but understand that they are under the umbrella of the United Methodist Church right now, okay?
Right, so it's happening right now?
Well, right now.
So, why would that, why would we think that it would, it would be thrust upon us if we stayed with UMC?
Fair enough. So, a couple thoughts, I mean, I'm going to kind of ramble here for a minute, but maybe there's an answer in there someplace. Currently, in the last couple pastors that we've had, we've been able to have relatively traditional pastors, okay? There are pastors out there that would be further or closer to the spectrum on the right-hand side of the paper, okay? Larry can speak to this, on a church they visited in Arizona, I don't know if you want to talk about it or not, but I'll give you a chance to know. Use the microphone for me.
I've had four things that's happened to me personally. Three of them been in this church, one was in Arizona. But the Arizona was about as ugly as you could get, and it was right after the 19, 2019 vote, which they were expecting to win, and they lost. And it was, I never heard love, and I never heard Jesus, but I heard a lot of hate. And that was also from their, their bishop on PowerPoint. I mean, we have to hate these, we have to correct these people, we have, they have to make, they have to do it our way, or the highway, basically. Now, I, do I have to still speak, Jeanne Anne? It's about ran through. But that, that was, you know, and she can, she wanted to leave, and I said, no, we're going to stay, we walked in here. If we would have went in the front door of the church, now this is being a little prejudiced to my mind, and saw all the rainbows, we probably would have picked another Methodist Church. We drove in the back, went in the back where everybody else was going in, and it was, ugly's an ugly word, but it was ugly that day. And that, believe me or not, believe me, but that's what happened.
And so there are pastors that, while it's not been your experience, it's not been my experience here, there are pastors who are on the right side of that sheet, okay, and are part of the United Methodist Church. And this is where my frustration comes, is if we've made a covenantal agreement, you know, a covenantal agreement means we agree, okay? We're bound to agree to this. If we've agreed to the things that are on the left-hand side of the page, then how does a pastor, how does a bishop, people in ecclesiastical leadership, disciple leadership, do anything over on the left, on the right-hand side? I don't, I don't, I agree with you, I don't get it, okay? And so while they look extreme, and I'm not trying to say, oh, it's 80% of them all feel this way, I'm not trying to suggest that, I'm just saying, that spectrum is within the United Methodist Church, and is not dealt with in a disciplinary fashion. You know, and my feeling is, if you're going to get up and espouse that Jesus was nothing, the Bible's a farce, you know, God is nothing, somebody should be, as a pastor, if you're going to say those things, somebody should be coming to you and putting their arm around your shoulder and saying, Angela, no, that's not what you're called to do, and that's not what you're free to do. But that's not what happened. So, go ahead, go ahead, give it mic.
You're not that loud.
But my situation is, I feel that the, the global, we could say the same thing. They're not clear on where they stand. We saw two opposing views in that situation. We had a minister that said he was global, and told us how he felt about the queer, queer community, and then Jeff Greenway came in and said something different. So, where actually do they stand? They haven't voted on their conference yet.
You're correct, they've not had a convening conference, but they
How are we to look at them as, well, this is what they're going to do? We're not certain what they're going to do either. So, who's to say that their ministers will not be of the, on the right side?
We can't predict the future, but what I would tell you is, the people who are forming the Global Methodist Church, this disciplinary issue is an extraordinarily hot topic. And the fact that nobody's brought to discipline, I believe that that will be held pretty tightly within that group. I think Pastor Hanover's comment was simply a mistake, okay? I don't think he understood exactly what it was, and he just made a mistake. Because we cleared that up that evening with Greenway, and it, and he was clear as can be. And I would trust in those two, Jeff Greenway, further than I would trust Tom Hanover, simply because Jeff's been at the front line of that entire conversation. No, I think, I think he's representing what the GMC's, well, that may or may not be a fair evaluation, so. Now, Angela, did I answer your question, or do I need to touch someone else? Anything else you want to mention there? Okay, fair enough. Brian?
I'll ask a different question.
Okay.
So, just for conversation's sake, if the church voted to disaffiliate, is it a reasonable, Pastor Jonathan, I'm going to put you on the hot seat, I'm sorry, is it reasonable to say that if the church said, "We're disaffiliating," then pastor may not come along for the ride?
So, are you, now, are you saying, any pastor, or are you specifically saying me?
Well, you specifically.
Okay, just to make sure I understand the question before I answer.
Right.
Yeah, so, scenarios that I would see kind of how this would play out, is, you know, I made it public knowledge, apparently, to everybody, that I, I personally am going to the GMC. That's where I'm going to end up. I think that's where I will be able to serve the Lord, and that's where I think that I belong. When I look at my theology and compare it to others, that's where I'm going to be. So, with that thought, kind of different scenarios. So, the basic three scenarios are this, is that the church either stays United Methodist Church, in which case, my hope would be to serve up until at least June, when the normal transition would happen. So, this year, I've been here four or five years, or four years, I'll be finishing five. If I was even staying United Methodist Church, there's a good chance my name is on a list that I'd be leaving and going somewhere else anyways, you know? But a normal transition time would happen in June for that. And so, what my hope would be, and it would be up to really the bishop, and then at their call and their service, my hope would be to finish that and finish it well, set up the next pastor for great fruitful ministry, for he or she to do great wonderful things here, as the church stays United Methodist. Second scenario would be if the church says, okay, we're leaving, and we want to go specifically to the GMC, well, then the door's kind of wide open for however long I could stay here, in the sense of, at some point, there'll be a convening conference, and the GMC will expect GMC pastors to serve GMC churches, and so I would be able to stay, and, I would be, the, the door would be open for however long we all mutually agree to, to stay together, pretty much. The third scenario would be independent, or either, you know, stay independent, or go to some like, connectional churches kind of format, if you will. And so in that scenario, what would likely happen is, I could stay for a decent season, I'm not going to say like, as in like, fall or spring, but a season of years, if you will. And basically, that would be until the church either would find a pastor to fit, or if the GMC says, okay, now that we're officially launching to the point where we expect our pastors to serve GMC churches, in which case, I would then go, have to be, go and serve at a GMC church. So, that would be kind of the three scenarios. But I think also, I want to say, this is too big a thing, don't make the decision on me. Like, you all have to choose what's right for your church, what's right for the future, where you think God is leading you. And, you know, there's two decisions that have to be made, one from, on me and my family, but also the church, and this church, and what this church wants to do. And of course, I love you guys, I want to keep going on the same path, but ultimately, I have no hard feelings if you guys go, pastor, we want to stay United Methodist, or we want to go do something else, and, you know, I get that, and I will always love you guys, and that's, that's okay. So, does that answer your question? Perfect.
Kathy?
Just a point of clarification, Jonathan, do you know that for a fact, that if this church decided to go GMC, that you would be here?
So, my expectation would be yes. And I say that because the one, the one caveat that I, that hasn't truly been ironed out is, it's typically understood that there's going to be no longer guaranteed appointment in the new church. So, one of the things that happens now in a church is, if you're an elder, which is what I am, we are called to go and serve wherever the, the church sends us. So, the conference, and the bishop, and the cabinet say, okay, you know, they ideally try to match a pastor with the skillset, with the needs of the church, and try to combine that and do that well. And so, in the current called appointment, you know, I serve at the discretion of the bishop, however long the bishop says you're serving there. In the new denomination, it's pretty much guaran, it has to technically be voted upon at the convening conference, but the expectation of all people going there is that the church is going to say, we're not doing the called system, we're not doing guaranteed appointment. And so therefore, it would really be up to pastor and church deciding the agreement of likes, you know, basically, it'd be kind of like a, I'm trying to draw, drawn a blank on the correct term, but instead of a called system, it's a
Interview system.
Yeah, kind of like, you know, it would be just kind of like an interview system in the sense of, I could stay as long as I want, or as long as the church would have me, kind of thing, with that. So, that is my expectation. Of course, as you guys are saying, it could all change, and that, you know, I'm taking a big gamble just to, to say what I'm doing, but I also feel pretty confident that that would be the case.
I think it's a reasonable thing, given the fact that we would be making this decision, and fully disaffiliating in June of next year, even if we made a move to the Global Methodist Church, the Global Methodist Church would probably say, are you okay with your pastor for the moment, for another year, and keep that person in place for one more year? Because they're not going to have everything in place to start moving people around easily, would be my read on it as well. So, so that would be that. Somebody over here, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, it's like everything else with the Global Methodist Church, that's what they plan, or that's what they say, but until they have their conference?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, and, and one of the things that I'm kind of hearing is, we don't trust what the Global Methodist Church is going to do. Well, fair enough, but you can't trust what the United Methodist Church has done, right? And what does that mean? I don't know. So, where do you put your confidence? I can't tell you what the right answer is. Well, fair enough, but in terms of a denominational choice, regardless of what denomination you pick, there will be human frailties in that, okay? And, you know, while, while we have no track record with the Global Methodist Church, that may be seen as a good thing, it may be seen as a bad thing, I don't know, so.
Just a point of clarification on, if you vote to disaffiliate, I guess by nature, you'd have to then do just a regular majority after that. Because if you don't get a supermajority, then there's, you're nowhere.
Right, right. Yeah, and that's why I say, I think, whatever, your, your affiliation vote probably can be a simple majority without, without it being a problem.
My main question is, so, if you're deciding between, say, say you vote to disaffiliate, deciding between GMC and independent, at what point do you decide what the independent side looks like? As Angela mentioned, what did the church look like, its independent? It could be almost anything that the church decides. So, at what stage do you decide what independent looks like? What do you get, you voting for, if you're voting for independent?
I don't have an answer for you, because I haven't thought that far ahead. I want to figure out where we at, you know? I don't want to put a lot of metal pressure on that just yet, but I, I think somewhere in that process, I think it's a fair question, before I would vote to go independent or global, I'd like to know what does independent look like.
You'd have to, yeah, before you vote to disaffiliate, wouldn't you have to decide what the independent structure looks like?
If you want to do the work, God love you. I mean, I, I, I don't think, here's, here's just a thought about the independent thing. The good news is, nobody tells you what you have to believe. The bad news is, you get to decide everything you believe. And so, that means that on these questions of theological issue, scripture, who Jesus is, justification, sanctification, involvement of the queer community, as well as other topics of sexual sin, there's a whole wide range. We're focusing on one, but there's a whole wide range. And social justice issues, domestic abuse, gambling, alcoholism, abortion. As an independent church, the good news is, you get to decide what your beliefs are on all those things. The bad news is, you get to decide your beliefs on all those things. And we're having a conversation around one element of that, that we have differing opinions on the queer community, that's okay. But every single one of those issues is fraught with the issue, or the possibility that this could be a divisive issue. And if you want, if you, you know, if you just talk to, we could just take the women in this room, and go over in the corner and say, come to a decision about abortion. There are ladies in here who have been touched by abortion personally. There are ladies who would have strong feelings one way or the other. And to ask a local congregation to come up with the wisdom to say, to discern, this is what we're going to believe. I haven't thought about who would make that decision. I presume you would put it in the hands of task force, trustee committee, whatever you want to call it, that would come up with what a belief structure is. And as Dr. Burden, or as Pastor Burden shared, there's lots of resources on the internet, I don't think that's the best place to go for your belief system, but the point is, there are models there that would say, here's what we believe. I was poking around a Wesleyan church denomination, just the Wesleyan church. And on their website, here's, this is it, this is what we believe. Here's a model. I mean, I can, we could go and find all sorts of models and find one that fits for us. You know, the United Methodist Church has one, but they're not enforcing it, and the Global Methodist Church has one, though we're not sure if we trust it or not. So, I don't know at what point, I can't answer the question, but, you know, at some point, exactly when, I can't tell you. But I think before you would make a choice, you would need to have a pretty good idea of what does independent look like for you. I think, I think that's, I think it's reasonable, yeah.
I have it. Okay, so the point of today is to have everything cleared up for us, and then just decide whether or not we want to contact the district superintendent.
The, my, my plan for today would be, we answer questions, hear people's comments and statements, and come up with a plan going forward. Now, the plan going forward could be, we don't want to do a thing, we want to stay United Methodist, that's a plan. It could be, we feel like we need some more discussion about these topics, that's a plan. It could be, we're ready to at least schedule a vote, let's go ahead and get that done. It could be, let's schedule a vote, and let's get some additional information before we make our vote. Any of those would be reasonable plans, or there could be something I'm not thinking about. But I'd like to leave here today with a plan that we're relatively in agreement, that this is what we're going to do going forward. Does that make sense?
Yes. And then also, clarification, I believe I heard that Dr. Tim Bias and Dr. Palmer are both retiring a year from now.
That is, my understanding was said publicly at a meeting at Lyopopolis in late July.
Okay, thank you.
If we, if we disaffiliate, at some point, and we find out it's not working, can we go back to joining?
UMC?
Yes.
Yeah, so, if we were to go through this disaffiliation process, the real advantage, if you will, of disaffiliating at this moment in time is, we get out of the trust clause that we've talked about before, so we would then own our property, okay? If we joined the Global Methodist Church, if it decided that doesn't work out for us, it just isn't a good it just isn't a good fit after all, we can leave the Global Methodist Church with our property, no penalty. There's no trust clause with the Global Methodist Church. You could then leave there and go over to this independent, or non-denominational, or the Presbyterians, or the Lutherans, or you could go back to the United Methodist Church. I don't know at this point that if you return to the United Methodist Church, whether the trust clause would be re-imposed or not. I just don't know. But yes, you can make a change.
Okay. And then I, I don't know whether this is true or not, but I heard that the Methodist is going to be the more progressive denomination up--
Say it again.
Compared to the goal, compared to the Global Methodist.
Which Methodist?
The Methodist. The United Methodist.
Yeah, and this kind of goes back to what Angela was saying. Um, and I didn't, I didn't finish, and you didn't press me, so I'm going to, I'm going to continue Angela's saying. There may be, uh, legislation, and I'm, I'm speculating completely, okay? There could be legislation that comes forward at a general conference, 24, 28, whenever, to change some of the doctrinal beliefs. Okay? Uh, could be major beliefs, could be minor beliefs, I, you know, whatever you want to say. There would be a sense that if 20% of the churches of the United Methodist Church today, who would describe themselves as traditional, if they left, then that would decrease the number of traditional votes within the United Methodist Church globally. So that a progressive element would say, ah, we've got an opportunity, the votes are in our favor. Could that happen? I don't know. Um, because I, first of all, I don't have a full understanding of the global picture this way, and I'm not, I've not been to general conferences, I don't understand all that stuff. What I will say is this, um, I believe the United Methodist part of the United Methodist Church will be more progressive in its theology as a whole. Even if the UMC stays with the exact doctrines they have, you will see, um, the United Methodist Churches in the United States be generally more progressive. Now, that's not to say there won't be traditional churches or more centrist, but it'll shift from being where the middle is now toward a progressive side because you've lost the traditional voice. That said, understand that the largest constituency of the United Methodist Church is on the continent of Africa. Period. That's true today. And they are not a progressive group. Okay? They are a very traditional group. And so, this has been, um, this has been a challenge within the global church because, um, many of the United Methodist Churches want to swing more progressive, and when they go to the global conference, they're getting over, overvoted, if you will, or voted down, primarily because of the lack of people in Africa that want to stay traditional. Um, and so, that's a, that's a player in this game as well. Um, what will happen? I can't tell you. But it would make sense to me that in the United States, the United Methodist Churches, if 5, 10, 20% of the traditional churches leave and go anywhere else, then what's left will be just naturally more progressive, though it may not be enough progressive to switch the entire global United Methodist Church. Does that help understand a little bit? Does that help you a little bit more, Angela? All right. Other questions, clarifications? Tim?
So, it seems one of the, the big selling points, if you will, for disaffiliation are your assets, which obviously it'd be nice to own your assets. But with that comes a whole host of other complexities, like, let's say we owned all our assets today, and we were deciding that global wasn't working out for us, which direction are we going to take? Who is going to set the bounds and the legal documents of, once we own our assets, what does that actually mean? We don't have to worry about that today, but if we disaffiliate immediately, now there's a whole bunch of people in a pocket of assets and no rules or governing laws that determine how those assets are either divided--
Nice.
--shared, held?
The guy with the biggest sword, maybe? I don't know. I, it's hard to tell. Yeah, I think, I think you're just, you're then going to be in a case where you're, we've just got to be a congenial group of people doing the best thing that we can, and come to a decision relatively quickly as to what we're going to follow and what we're going to do. Um, I don't have a better answer than that. It could, you know, could there be some chaos? There could be. I don't see that happening. I think, generally speaking, we're a relatively reasonable group of folk that will come to conclusions that are the right fit and the right thing for us, um, so far as that goes. Um, I don't know. You got a follow-up for me, or? Okay, all right. So, sometimes there's not a good answer, folks, and I, I just, I'm being honest with you. Becky?
I just have a question. When you were talking about the African community, it being so traditional, do they not plan to go to the global United, or Global Methodist?
Some will, but some won't.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, under, understand, while here in our community, in our region, in Ohio, the United States, some would say that the United Methodist name is tainted. On the continent of Africa, it is held in extraordinary esteem. Okay? I mean, the United Methodist Church has done phenomenal things on the continent of Africa, uh, which have, I mean, you know, it, it's a proud thing to be a United Methodist on the continent of Africa. So, for them to leave the United Methodist Church is not a, a small step, it's a huge step. And so, some of them are planning to depart and become part of the Global Methodist Church, some are not. Um, and I can't define for you who is and who isn't, why are they, why aren't, but, but understand that title, that banner is held in such high esteem on the continent that, um, you know, they, they would rather die than, you know, lose that name. So, but certainly an option exists that they could go global. Other questions, clarifications? Jen?
So, Dave kind of said it before, but for me, I'm, I'll just say, I'm not sure what I want to do, how I want my vote. I am really struggling with that. It's hard for me to say I want to disaffiliate from United Methodist without truly understanding what independent might be. And I just don't think I can make that vote without having a general idea. And I understand what you're saying, there's a lot that goes into it, and I get that. But I guess, and I don't, that's not you just saying it right now, because that might be your opinion, I think that's going to be more of a collective discussion. I know we don't like to do surveys, but almost a survey. You know what I mean? Of like, what does everyone think independent should be? So, I guess what I'm saying is, I wouldn't be ready to vote today, because I don't know what that means. So, I just kind of wanted to make that statement, even though we're not at the statement show.
That was not a question, and we're still on questions.
I'm acknowledging that. I just wanted to say that I know I jumped ahead.
Sounds like we moved on.
I knew, I knew somebody would jump out of the order there. I just didn't think it would be you, so that's okay. All right. Other questions and clarifications, since we're still on that part of the conversation? All right. So, maybe you were just a step ahead, maybe. We'll just say it that way, and, um, we'll move into our time of statements and thoughts. So, as we move into this time, you're invited to share your thoughts, uh, which now we've had one already. Um, I'll point out, as Jonathan mentioned earlier, this church is not about one person's choice. Oh, wait, have we got a question? Or are you going to make a statement?
Oh, I'll be, a couple of statements.
Okay, well, hold on, let me, let me finish. Um, I'm going to point out that this church is not about one person's choice. It's not about the pastor, it's not about any other individual member, it's about Jesus Christ. I would encourage you to not make your decision just because someone else suggested they thought they would vote one way or another. Now, you may be well influenced by what another one says and agree with them, and that's perfectly fine. But just because one person here feels one way or another should not solely determine your opinion. Now, know that I may be silent after you present, or I may ask a question for clarification, or to draw more from you. That's not it, that's all intended as love and grace, so please do not interpret any of it as being mean-spirited or embarrassing, because that's not how it's intended to be. So, with that, Rich, we'll give you the first shot here.
Oh, thank you very much. I'd just follow up on Monica's, uh, comment there about, uh, whether we go global or independent. To me, everything that's been presented so far, it sounds to me like if we decide to leave the UMC and we go global, and down the road, we just, oh, that's not what we want to do, we'll go back to, or we'll go to independent. It's going to be a lot easier transition than if we stay UMC, because, as I understand, we have a, uh, time limit as far as how long we can do that. So, maybe we vote to GMC and then go independent later.
And I, let me, let me say this, I think that's a fair statement. If your choice would be to ever leave the United Methodist Church--
Yes.
For whatever reason, this moment and window of time that we have is probably going to be the easiest moment. After December 20, December 31st, 2023, we don't know what's going to happen. The general conference could extend that to the same guidelines indefinitely, or nothing could happen, in which case your departure will be subject to the trust clause and a whole variety of other things. So, I think it's a fair statement that this moment in time is the most easy way, easy time to leave, and if you chose to go someplace else, you'd be more mobile. Those are fair statements.
Okay. And also, for number two, uh, I think we should call for a vote today. Not to physically vote today, but, uh, inviting superintendent to make a schedule, give us a schedule, so he can be here, so we can take a formal vote. Uh, I think it's going to help everybody in the church that we know where we're headed. Also, I think it's in fairness to Pastor Jonathan, so he knows where we're headed. And not that we have to vote with him, or we have to vote with somebody else, like you said, to follow somebody else. I was hoping everybody would follow me, but that's not going to happen.
Maybe they will, you never know, so. Okay. Others? Thoughts, statements? Angela?
I would think that us sitting here today and listening to everything that's been presented, and that we are a loving church family, that we would want to be able to maintain and hold on to as many people as that we have here. Because the idea of leaving is shocking and, and hard to face. And I don't think that we should take, where we're going to go lightly, I don't think that we should, um, be, uh, moving quickly. I think we should still be methodical in how we do this process. I agree with Jen, that, um, I don't know that we have enough information about what it would look like if we went independent, how we could build our own doctrine and belief systems. The reality is, for years, we have functioned with different beliefs here within the walls of this church. That's evident with the fact that I don't think anybody here thinks that we, if we voted today, we'd be 100% in any direction. That speaks to how we can come to this church, still feel welcome and loved, because the heart of it is Christ and His teachings, and where we go with that, um, that we can still come together with different viewpoints, but at the end of the day, we know where our heart is, and our heart is Christ-centered. So, uh, I just feel like, I don't think we're ready to make a next step. I think that we really should, I think it would be great if we had, I know we had a little presentation about independent, but I really don't, I, I didn't get, I'll be honest, I didn't get a lot from that presentation.
Yeah, and a, a person emailed me this week and said, could we hear, not from pastors, but from laity from the Global Methodist Church, and also laity from, uh, the, um, from an independent church? And I, I responded, and I said, well, the story, the fact of the matter is, no church is a Global Methodist Church right now, so I can't provide that to you. But we know that Reynoldsburg United Methodist Church is functioning as close to a Global Methodist Church as any, that's where Greenway is lead pastor, and it's functioning as much as anything. Uh, and certainly, we know laity over there that we could bring in and could explain what that has looked like for them. Likewise, if we felt that, uh, we wanted to hear from some laity from either Trinity UMC or another independent, previously United Methodist Church, we could get that, we could get a totally different independent church. I mean, we could have people, we can do that. Uh, and if, if our, you know, and so, one of the options I shared is, we may say, let's go ahead and schedule a vote for disaffiliation. Uh, district superintendent has 120 days to schedule that. So, today is the 14th of August, that means he has until the 14th of December. Ask him to schedule that later in that timeframe. And then, in the meantime, take some time and, and bring in whatever information we need, gather whatever other information we need or feel we need to pull that all together. That would not be unreasonable at all.
Just curious, if we wanted to not vote, can we cancel the vote within the 120 days?
Probably could, yeah.
I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility.
Yeah, I, I think if, if we came back to the, the district superintendent and said, whoa, whoa, we thought we were going to be ready, it's clear that we're not going to be ready, then we would probably could cancel at any time. He'd say, great, I get three hours of my time back, you know? He'd be okay with that. The only timepiece becomes, we would have to have, I'm speculating, I haven't seen information for sure, uh, everything, we would need to have a vote and all our paperwork in by, let's say, April 30th of next year, to be eligible to be considered the annual conference in early June next year. Which is a lot of time, I mean, that's six months, eight months, almost. So, um, and if, and I would argue, if we can't come to a conclusion in that period of time, either we stay or we go, then we're never going to come to a conclusion. Right? I mean, and I, I appreciate if folks say, not quite ready, don't think I have enough. Okay, that's fair. Then tell me what more you want, because to say, well, I'm not ready, okay, we could say that for the next six years. Okay? Let's, tell me what you need to have to make a conclusive decision. We'll work toward that. I'm, I'm fine with that.
I just, there's so many unknowns. I mean, we can agree to that, that, yeah, UMC is still an unknown, uh, the global church is still an unknown, we're not, we don't have enough information about how we would go independently. This is such a huge decision, decision, I think that we need more information, that's just my opinion on it.
We've certainly done a fair amount of due diligence. I mean, it's, you know, should we do more? That's up to y'all to tell us what we want to do. Jeff?
So, I agree with, with Angela and, I'm pretty sure your name's Rich. I'm sorry, I'm too new still. We're really bad with names. Um, and I was just thinking, wouldn't it make, if you don't agree with, you know, we don't know what any church is going to do, is the long story short of this, we don't know for certain. So, wouldn't it make the most on-the-book sense that we all agree to go to Global Methodist, and then while we're there, we can be in a holding period in there, and if we decide we don't like Global Methodist, we can go back to UMC, and while we're Global Methodist, we could have a committee that's coming up with what an independent church for us would look like? So, that way, in a year or two after that's decided, then we could have another vote to say, we actually like what the independent's looking like, we don't like what global is. Like, it just seems to me like keeping our assets and going to a structure that's already in place would be the best sense, even if you don't agree with anything they say, just because that gives us the most options in the future. So, is it just kind of delaying the, delaying it for a year, I guess?
Hopefully, you would agree with some of the things they say, you may wouldn't. So, but yeah, if, even if you disagreed with some of the stuff and said, ah, your point is, at least make the move now, so that you have options in the future if you need them. Fair enough. Angela's back here.
No, Brian just got jumped over. Go ahead, Brian.
I got jumped, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, I'm going to hit it with a different view, because, like, for me, I've sat upstairs, and I don't get to watch, I have to listen, so I listen more to what's going on and more to what's being said than anything else. And as I listen to the different presentations, here, the couple of takeaways that I found was, you know, in the first presentation with the United Methodist Church, the biggest thing that stuck out with me was when, um, the presenter had said, I'm going to stay with the United Methodist Church, there is a red line, that if we cross this red line, I'll leave the church. That wasn't defined, but he said, I'm fine with it right now, but if we cross a red, a red line, I'm out. That one stuck with me. The second one, the second thing that stuck with me is, you know, going forward to week two, is in the independent part. The biggest takeaway from that is, is purely this, he said, look, if you vote to go independent, great. If you're not willing to do the legwork that goes along with going independent, no. And it's, you know, going independent isn't just saying, hey, we're independent and we're good. No. He, he didn't emphasize it enough to say, there's a boat-- there's a boat ton of legwork that goes along with that. If you're not willing to do that legwork, you know, this isn't for you. You know, the third presentation, the only thing I can, the only thing I can say is, that was, it wasn't a great presentation. And I'll leave, and there's a lot more I could say, but I'll leave it at that. It was not a great presentation. If, it just, you know, and I don't get to vote, but if, if there was a decision that was made today, you know, the only thing that I would feel comfortable with based on what was presented was, you know, if we left the United Methodist Church, I could see that. If we went independent, I'd be comfortable with that. But based on the presentation that, you know, with the Global Church, that was not a great presentation and I would not be warm to that in the slightest.
Let me, go ahead, go ahead, Angela.
I was just going to say, you know, it's something where two, I mean, and Kathy brought it up, and, you know, I would agree with Kathy. It's something where, you know, until there's a convening conference, so you know exactly what it is that you're dealing with. You know, we'd be better off, you know, being on our own and being independent and to see what the lay of the land is. And then if we decided, okay, there's a convening conference, you know, we like what we're seeing, let's go this way, great. You know, we keep talking about Global Methodist. Okay, you could, you know, if you're independent, you could choose to go Baptist or Presbyterian or Lutheran. It's not Global Methodist or nothing.
Right. And you could pick a whole variety of Wesleyan denominations, you know, if you're, if you're one that feels strongly about a Wesleyan influence in your church teaching and doctrine, then there are a variety of expressions of that as well. It doesn't have these global methods. Let me just make a comment about the speakers. When Jonathan and I were talking about the speakers that we would have come and present, the two most likely candidates for the United Methodist Church would be our District Superintendent, Tim Bias, and probably Pastor Jeff Greenway over at Reynoldsburg United Methodist Church. I'll take the heat on this, but I personally didn't want either of them coming, and the reason was this. I pretty much expected that Tim Bias would be very much a company guy, if you will. I mean, he's going to give the company line for the United Methodist Church. Now, he spoke at Lythopolis last week. I got to be fair, he didn't give the company line at all, I didn't think. It was just a personal explanation of why he would stay United Methodist, and that was it. So there was no strong, you need to stay United Methodist? None of them, okay? And in fairness, Jeff Greenway, I know him quite well, dealt with him a number of times. I felt he might be a lightning rod because he's been on the very forefront of the Global Methodist movement. And so I didn't want them coming in, okay, initially. Now, the people that we got, we thought, we had conversation with folks, it was decided that these would be good choices. And you never know until you actually hear them speak, right? But I would tend to agree with the statement, Tom Hanover was less than what we would have wished. Roger Grace was probably a little less than what we would have wished. I thought Tim Burton did a great job, but he's got, had a very unique situation, very unique. So, you know, and we can have more people come in. That's not an issue at all. What I don't want to do is get into a situation where we get into what you sometimes will hear called analysis paralysis, right? Where we sit and we just listen to things time after time after time after time after time, and we never make a decision. And I don't want to get into that situation. I suppose you could make a decision that you wanted to vote for disaffiliation and give the District Superintendent and say, give the District Superintendent latitude and say, we're willing to go into February next year. We don't want to schedule it now, but aim for February, and we're not going to get excited because it's beyond the one hundred and twenty days and he's supposed to do it. You could do that, or we could delay our request, or whatever we need to do so that it was in that timeframe. So I just, I don't want us, you know, I love seeing y'all. I know y'all love seeing me, but we've spent five Sunday afternoons together. How many more do you need before you're going to be able to have a decision? And let's move toward that. Did I say what you were going to say anyway? Go ahead, go ahead. Your wife wants to talk there, Keith. Make sure. Oh, Angela's ahead of you. Sorry. Oh, here we go.
Thanks for saving my marriage.
I do not want to have any more speakers. I, I know where, I think I know where everybody's stance. And as your treasurer, I have taken the time to look at the discipline for the Global Methodist Church. And let me tell you, it is verbatim of what the United Methodist Church is, except for the trust clause. We are still going to pay apportements. We are still going to contribute to our pastor's pension. We're still going to have somebody help us to decide what our pastor's salary is. But the theology is the same. Do we know if Global Methodist will rein in the progressives? We don't know that. I think they have some strong hands. And that's my personal opinion of Jeff Greenway. He's kind of a, I don't want to say bully, but he's got a very strong personality. And so I, I would like to stay U M C because, because the first speaker, the word that he said that struck with me and why I became a United Methodist in my late twenties, what's the word, love? He said, the United Methodist Church to me is love. And I have seen that in every United Methodist Church I have been in. And I would pray that if we go to G M C, that, that is their focus too, because I think, and I don't think you might, Methodist name is tainted. Look at the great things they have done in our community, the great things they have done in our world, with the mission field, with hospitals, with schools. They have a great history. And so it's kind, it's sad that we have to throw that away because we have this threat of progressives. I know that the folks that are Global Methodist, they have tried to battle that, battle of the progressive thought that you read on the right side of the paper. And I think they became frustrated. And that's why they're starting the Global Methodist Church. And I think their hope is that we can stick to what we believe in and not make up these things about the Bible and Christ. So I'm torn. I'm still torn. If we took the vote today, right today, I would, I still not know which way I'd go, but I, I just think I don't want to hear from anybody else because I think we have enough information. And if you want to, you know, go online and read the Global Methodist theology, it's right there. It's right there in their doctrine. And if you've ever read U M C, it's the same thing. It's the same thing. So that's what I have to say.
Jeff, I have a question since we went to a statement during questions. I'm going to go to a question during statement. And it actually dovetails kind of with what Vicki was saying, only I want to ask the question, and not to you, but to Pastor Jonathan. And I want to ask, could you know more about Global Methodist Church and their, what are expected to be policies more than anyone in this room? So in the last year or even two years, if we had been operating as the G M C is viewed to become, had we been that for the last two years? Or then any sermons that you would not have delivered as you delivered? Were there any weddings you wouldn't have performed that you did perform? Were there any funerals that you took care of that you wouldn't take care of as G M C? Or literally, things above us may have been different when you're talking to the bishop and to national level people and concerns, but from Groveport sitting in this pew, would I have seen anything different in your actions or anything that you would have done had you been, we been, G M C the last two years?
God be running around all over the place.
So sure, as I heard a couple of questions in there, but the easy one's the last one. So I'll answer that first, and I think it really kind of covers the rest, is, so the simple answer is, the way I've done my ministry here is exactly how I plan on doing my ministry in the future, wherever I am. I think there is going to be room in Methodist Church to do that. I do think in the Global Church, there's definitely room to do that. What I don't want to do is spend my time debating some of the things that I think are core Christian beliefs when I'm in rooms with other pastors. And I've gotten kind of, I've gotten kind of disheartened, I guess is the best word, of when I go to pastor events in our conference and I'm told, oh, well, they didn't tell me this, but the guest, the prime speaker says something along the lines of, we don't, I don't ever say the creeds because it excludes people. I believe them, but we don't ever say them. And I'm like, well, that's, the point of the creed is that this is the core of the faith, right? And so when I hear, when I just go in and do things like that, I, I leave and I'm disheartened and I focus on the things that God doesn't want me to focus on. I end up arguing with people in my head than I do worried about reaching the people in the community for the love of God. And so, but the short answer to your question is, whether this church had G M C on the front, U M C on the front, independent, whatever on the front, there's nothing that I have done that I would do differently these past four years. Yeah. And as, whatever future holds, because who knows what happens, right? Even though I have theory, I know where I'm going. If something changes, I still plan on doing what I've been doing for these last four years into the future as long as I'm able to. Yeah. Any other questions? I know there was a few other questions in there. Did I get them all?
This is from America's Best Optical. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, your wind test division. I would like to make a statement and a thought. As we sit here and listen to everybody talk, we are very, very blessed. And I thank you, Jeff Myers, for the job you're doing.
A couple Sundays ago, Tom Stevenson made the ques, made the statement that I wonder what Clarence and Thelma or Bob and Adelia or Bob and Mary would have thought. Well, what I see is this, this isn't Mom and Dad's United Methodist Church anymore. And I kind of think of Ronald Reagan when he was asked why he left the Democratic Party. His statement was, I didn't leave the party, the party left me. And that's really the way I kind of feel about the United Methodist Church right now. The lack of transparency, the lack of leadership, it is disheartening that we, we talk about the things in the United Methodist Church as the discipline and the doctrine, but since there's no gatekeeper anymore that wants to make people adhere to discipline and doctrine, I don't know what you believe in when you say, I believe in the United Methodist Church. That, that's very disheartening to me. And when they have created a process that is enticing to the local churches to gain control of your assets, it's almost like they're encouraging congregations to leave in, in a certain point. So I understand the concern about moving forward in the direction that we move, but I, I guess bottom line is, I'm, I'm really done with the United Methodist Church and I would be ready to leave it.
Andrew, would you like to say something?
Yes, sir. Vicki, I want to say thank you. I was fortunate that the United Methodist Church, I want to say that again, the United Methodist Church put me through high school from tenth grade to twelfth grade. And it is painful. However political or leadership you see this, we must be honest with ourselves. You can look in their eyes every one year. There is no way, wherever you want to go, any side will win. So it may difficult, I may feel bad, as you said, Jeff, from the beginning, that you should be prepared to deal with the stress because your side will not win. I don't know why they skin about. But the United Methodist Church, from what I, I learned from my days when the S showing United Methodist pastors sponsored me to school, that he said it was destined, and it was destined for me to be, it was destined that he sent me to school. It was destined to the grace of God. So we one hundred percent believe in God. I don't believe, how many percentage, I don't know whatever other churches leaders say, especially the pastor, because we all human. The United Methodist Church get strict law. Unfortunately, a lot of people, a lot of people who were entrusted to be leadership, from the pastor to the lead leader, even cannot one hundred percent apply the laws. No one over here, even in our own church, none of the lead leader, none of the pastor ever applied the law one hundred percent. It may not be only from doctrine, but starting from doctrine all the way. That is the fact. In our own womb, we are not one hundred percent strict. So in short, it is, Jeff, unfortunately, we find ourselves with the issue, bringing division among people who are lovely, from different backgrounds. Are you killing me? Do you think everyone here has the same background? No, we are different. We think different. But let off, face our eye on the God, that the apostle Chris said, let us know that Jesus Christ is the son, the father, and the blessed eternity. So we don't need no speaker, just as she said, wherever denomination, for example, G M C, a lack of photocopy of U M C, the only one different, that one different, is the claw, trust claw. The trust claw being with United Methodist from the day United Methodist were established for goodness. Now, as we grow, other people may see it different. I understand that. But so I want to appeal to everyone here, instead of wasting our time, we are, it's not wasting time, but we are a lot of thing. If this is why God is descending on each of our mind, if we want to put it to vote, we need to put it to vote. But remember, no vote, no one will be satisfied. If we call for disaffiliation, wherever we want to go, we will not be satisfied. I just want each of us to pray, whatever decision we want to take now. Jeff brought good suggestion, what I want to carry, April. But let us pray, it's a tough thing. I met a lot of you guys here. This church is a vibrant church. The United Methodist brand is one of the biggest brand in the world. You guys see it differently based upon your political view. So I just want to say, it difficult, from my own viewpoint, if a voter take to say to go global, photocopy, or to remain United Methodist, and execute our local community view, that is to say, whoever pastor that will come in here, you must speak what the Bible say. You don't speak what you believe. We can develop that power to say, if you speak what you believe, you got to be out of here tomorrow. We don't want you. Because we want people who will talk about the Bible, who will see God, not only speaking of the Bible, but who will see in each person, God, the love of God. You can know the Bible, but you don't treat everybody that God bless every race equally. You are not doing it. And that's what a lot of us continue to do. I just want to say it tough. But I want to say thank you, Jeff, but to all of you, the decision is ours. We must pray on it. If you prepare to leave your friend, whatever decision we take, some of us will leave, some people will leave. And Pastor Janitor, I think you told us long time leadership, I had opportunity, I continue to pray for you. You will be okay. to pray for you, you will be okay, everyone will be okay. Thank you.
Rich?
Well, we've talked about this in Sunday School class since this has come to a semi-head, if you will, and that is, we would really like to stay together, members of our Sunday School class. So I offer that up to the entire church. If the vote goes, you know, A, B, C, A wins with 67%, what's going to happen to the other 33? Are all of you going to leave? Probably not. So think about that when you vote.
Hi, I'd like to make a couple different statements, so this may be a little lengthier than I would like it to be. First of all, I've already thanked you, but I want to thank you, Jeff, from the bottom of my heart. I know how much time and effort you have put into these sessions, and I appreciate that. I've sat in on the meetings, I know what you've gone through, it's tough. Second of all, I've been on the journey with Jesus and you from the start, and I appreciate every week doing the journey with Jesus and Jeff. I am going to miss it, but I also know that if I was doing that, what type of preparation it would involve and what type of time commitment that is. And I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart, and I hope I speak for the rest of the congregation as well. So thank you. Take as long as you need, I'll be waiting for you when you come back. Number three, as far as disaffiliation goes, I don't think there's any, I think we ought to get while the getting is good, in, in, in short, we're not going to have this opportunity again, I don't believe. I think that the United Methodist would welcome back with, welcome us back with open arms. Now, I, I guess my question would be, are they going to have to pay us to come back if we're going to institute the trust clause? I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think so, but I don't think they'd have any problem welcoming us back if that's what we decided to do. But I think at this point in time, we're not going to get this opportunity again for less than $200,000 minimum to own this majestic building, the property and the parsonage. To me, that's a no-brainer. That, that's a, that's a sign on the dotted line, where do I do this, kind of decision. Therefore, we have to disaffiliate in order to get that deal, you might say. Now, where we might end up after disaffiliation is another story entirely. I think independence is going to be a lot of work, and as a member of the church leadership, I'm tired, folks. You know, I'm, I'm not sure I want to, to do all that legwork, although if I, if asked, I would absolutely do that, there is no question. I love the people in this church, and that's what I would do. However, I don't think, you know, whether we end up global or whether we end up independent, we've got time to figure that out. We're not going to have the time to disaffiliate again in another year. So like I said, I think we ought to get while the getting is good, and we have time to figure out what we want to do. I think the global Methodists adhere to the top 12 commandments, you might say, the, the big 10, as well as love one another and love your God with all your heart, soul and mind. And that's what I tend to fall under. Human sexuality isn't in the big 12 commandments. And although I have a child that's gay, I would not make that part of my decision necessarily because I think the top 12 are more important than that. And I also don't think that it has a, a place in being in the pulpit. So that's why I would disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church as well. And lastly, I want to know where you think, Jeff, where you're at on this.
I'll hold that for just a moment, but I'll answer your question. Kathy? I see you back there. Where'd Larry go?
I lost my helper.
Oh, you got, oh, okay, okay, go ahead, all right. So we'll go, we'll go Kathy, Courtney, and back in the corner there, go ahead.
When I was two, my biologic mother died. My father couldn't take care of me, so I spent a lot of time with family. We went to a little church out in Hilliard, that's where my family's buried. The name of that church is Wesley Chapel. And so when I walked in here, I thought, "I'm home," because that's on the front, one of the stones here. I've been here for 30 years, my daughter was baptized here, my daughter was married here, Jack and I were married here, his funeral was here. I thought I was going to be buried here. And maybe I'm just now waking up, but the last couple of years have been watershed for me, and I, I don't care for politics and I don't care for being in front of people, and I prefer to serve behind the scenes. And you know I work, you know I've served, you know I've brought my family here. And the thought of not coming here on Sundays breaks my heart. I can't even imagine it. But the last couple of years, I haven't heard about social justice, I haven't heard about racism, I haven't heard about people who are different. I'm a sinner saved by grace, that's the bottom line. I believe people in the queer community are born that way. I do not believe it's a life choice. Why would it be? We treat them terribly. I am not qualified to judge anyone else, it's just not my job. And I can't see treating other people as less than me. How, how could I do that? How could I say to someone, "You're less than me"? I, I don't get it. And so, when the Global Methodist Church gave us their very slick presentation, and I asked the question of one of our speakers, I don't remember who it was, if they had to choose between rules and love, their choice was love, and that's my choice too. So I'm just going to put it out there, I would never be comfortable with the Global Methodist Church. I like being United Methodist, I love y'all, I can't imagine not being here. But when I hear things like, people are withholding their giving so that it looks on paper like we have less money than we do, so that if there's going to be a buyout, we'll have less we have to declare, Ananias and Sephira comes to mind. I hear comments about people's nationality and, and their color, and I, I just, I, I don't get it. I, I'm not, I'm not going there. So I love y'all, if you're going global, I'll see you around.
Court?
I just wanted to share, a couple of years ago, I had the privilege of sharing my testimony at a district meeting and then was asked to do a similar testimony before annual conference. And part of what I was asked to talk about was why I was a part of the United Methodist Church. And I had to stop and think about it because I've had a lot of personal disagreements with the United Methodist Church since I came into my faith and since I did research and, and learned about how some leaders are choosing to live out their calling. But when I sat down and, and really wrote and thought about why I was United Methodist, it came back to, Kathy said it, it's all about how do we love and grace, how do we meet people where they are, how do we treat them like the woman at the well, and, and meet them at that place and then help them see how to move forward. The idea, Kathy, 30 years for you, it's four generations for us, like, I can't even imagine. And we're all going to have to make our own choice, and what I would encourage all of us to do is to really pray, to read, and I've been rereading, Jeff's had to hear this, my parents have had to hear it, rereading the letters to the seven churches in Revelations, rereading what Jesus said, his actual words, read the red parts of the Bible. And that's where, whether you like it or don't like it, or you agree with it or you don't agree with it, that's, I will tell you, that's how I'm getting my answer, that's how I'm praying a lot about it. And the last thing I would say is that, and I can't remember his name from the independent church, Tim, it's not Bias, because you said Bias, it's Tim Benson?
Burton.
Martin.
Burton, B-U-R-D.
Burton. He said, when, in their letter to the bishop, I'm going to actually say two things, in his letter to the bishop, they said that what was happening in the Methodist Church was keeping them from living into the mission. And Tim Bias said that last week as well, that the mission needs to be the main thing. He said, anytime you're around, Tim, he will say that over and over again because he feels called and that I think we all should feel called into, what is the mission? And that is make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. I think that would be a good calling for any of us to have. If there is something in the Methodist Church, the United Methodist Church, the Global Methodist Church, whatever the independent churches, if there's something that is keeping you from living into the mission of making disciples for Jesus Christ, then that's got to be your answer. And that would be my answer, and that's what I would encourage everyone to pray about and to really study and make it the mind, heart decision.
Okay, Ms. Joyce?
Okay.
I'm just going to tell you the same thing that the Lewis's would tell you, and that is, one spouse does not necessarily speak for the other spouse, okay? But I'm not, I don't say that to throw her under the bus, but she
That is true.
Has her own opinion, so go ahead.
Okay, so I grew up in a Baptist church, so I came here 20-some-odd years ago and, and love this church and the people here. And it does break my heart to see going through this. And this has become my home church as well. And however, I have a very strong pull for me to disaffiliate. I think that supporting, I feel like we support because we are one huge group of people with leadership and whoever, wherever they are in the US and so on and so forth, I feel that I'm supporting those people that are saying, "I don't really believe Jesus is the prophet or the Messiah, I don't, there's parts of the Bible we don't believe or don't believe it is the Bible." If you have those people in leadership, which we've, we've learned a lot more about that lately, I think we all kind of heard those things, but recently it's been in the forefront of our conversations about UMC currently. My thought is, I, in my heart, hearts, cannot be part of that, and I won't be. I will not put myself in that, so if, if you go UMC, I won't be here, not that that matters to anybody, but I just, it would, it's just something I can't do. It's in my heart, it's not, it's not right to be and support someone with my gifts, with my money, with, with, you know, whatever it is, to be a part of that group and say, because I, as I feel, I'm saying, "I'm okay with you doing that. I'm okay with you saying Jesus is not who I think he is and who the Bible says he is." I'm not okay with that. And that's the big thing to me, is I will not be part of that. And so, that's how I feel. What should we do if we disaffiliate? I think we should. I think as far as global or, or independent, independent, everybody says it, it's a lot of work, it is, it is. Is everybody in here willing to do that? I don't know, you know, it's a lot of work. And would I do my part? I would, if that was what we had to do, I would do it. Global Methodist, a lot of people have a tainted view of them. I mean, I know Jeff Greenway very well, I've been in many meetings and events and walks with him and, and, you know, I know he's a big part of it, and he is, is a strong personality, but I think a strong personality is the only personality that can get through this. A wimpy kind of guy is not going to make it, it's not going to take these people and move them to Global Methodist, that's not going to happen, you know? So he, he is who he needs to be right now, and, and I, I praise him for that, I think he's done a great job. And I believe everyone wants to know a definite, a definite, where are we going? What is exactly written in stone of what the Global Methodist is going to do? Nobody's going to know, you don't know that with anybody. There is, there's always a risk, you have to go by faith, you have to do what you believe is the right thing. But with the Global Methodist, they are leaving that group with a different, with different ideas in mind of what they want to do versus what's been going on in UMC. And they want to get back to, my understanding is back to where we were, where we should have been in the first place with many different things, and a lot of it is about Jesus and about the Bible. And let's go back to the bare bones of where we, of the Wesleyan teachings and all of that, let's go back to that. So if somebody's pulling out of that with that strong thought in mind, I'm going to trust them personally. You know, I think that they, they've got a good, they've, they've, they've got a good plan from what I've heard, and I think that's, that's what they're feeling, is that we need to get away from this, which is the same way I feel, is they need to get away from, from the people just doing whatever they want to do and going back to the, the discipline and what we actually said we were going to do when we signed up to be a pastor, when we signed up to be a member, all those things back in the 60s when all that started in this church. So that's my opinion, that's just my opinion, but I think that, and, and I don't, I, I would have more research to do honestly on both of those options, but for right now, I, I believe Global Methodist might be our way to go. I think we definitely need to disaffiliate. Reason, like Elaine said, get out while the getting is good, would be lovely to keep this building and, and, you know, you don't want to give that back. And they're letting you do that now. And last thing I would say is, UMC, you know, we, we don't know what that's going to be like when lots of people exit that, that are wanting to stand on those beliefs. And if they, if they leave, which they are going to, and leave UMC to be UMC, what is that going to look like? You know, I don't think it's going to be pretty, I don't think it's going to be something you recognize, that's my opinion. But that's, that's all I got to say. And that's my opinion, not Jeff's opinion, that's mine.
Others? Monica?
Many, many years ago, we had a capital campaign. We brought in a guest that was going to help us. He said, "Just remember, this building has been on this corner for now well over 100 years, and think about all the businesses and the homes in Groveport that are no longer here, but this building has stood, and we need to do everything we can to keep it."
Before I make my main point, I wanted to make two comments. Number one, watching this white-haired, watching this white-haired gentleman run back and forth handing people microphones, it is the best Phil Donahue impersonation I have ever seen. And he was just outstanding. Second, I would agree with Jeff that a spouse does not have to reflect the views of the person they're married to, a husband doesn't have to agree with their wife, but if he's not a moron, he will. So those are my two points. You know, the issue before us today is not whether we want to leave the United Methodist Church, it's not whether we want to join the globalist church. The issue before us today is whether we want to take a vote, to exercise an option to vote to leave. Many people have said already that there is a very limited amount of time in which we can exercise that option, and there is a small window which is closing in which we could vote to exit and keep our property, or retain our property. I think it would be foolish not to exercise the option to take a vote. Now, how that vote comes out is dependent on all of you. We may vote to stay, we may vote to become independent, we may vote to join the Global Methodist Church. During some, doing some research, we may vote none of the above, we may vote to reach out to Rock City or X Church and see if we can affiliate with them. we can affiliate with them. But all of those are secondary to the point of whether we're going to exercise our option to vote. I think there are a lot of different opinions here. We've heard from a lot of them. How you, how you vote is going to be something very personal to each of you, and a decision each of us is going to have to make on our own. But I think we ought to love each other enough, and trust each other enough, to allow each other to vote on how they feel. And so with that, I would make a motion that we hold a vote, and notify the superintendent that we want to vote to exercise our option as to whether we want to stay or leave.
So there's a motion on the floor to ask the district superintendent for a vote for disaffiliation. Is there a second, Jeff?
I would second it, but can I ask something first? Is there a downside to voting? We don't have to pay, no, there's no downside to voting. Okay.
So we have a motion, and seconded on the floor, to ask for a vote for disaffiliation. I'm going to hold that for just a moment, and just ask for other statements and comments, make sure that we clear that before we act on that. Are there other statements or comments? I think it's Keith, or is it Keith or Larry? Larry?
I come to you from the COVID alcove.
I'm glad you're, we kept you back there, so you don't make the rest of us say.
Oh, I tested negative yesterday and feeling better, but I wanted to be cautious and protect all of you. You know, it's been said, if you don't believe in something, you'll fall for anything. And had a lot of time in these last months, really, and in some cases, years, to think about this, these issues, and where we are, and where we've been. And I too was baptized in this church with my two little girls. A lot of wonderful memories. But I also remember what the great Eric Persigan said. I'm not a big Notre Dame guy. My son-in-law hates them. But remember when he took a losing team after, just a few years after a losing team? One of the very first team meetings that the great coach said, he had a football in his hand, he looked at all the players, he said, gentlemen, he'd have to say, ladies and gentlemen, today, gentlemen, this is a football. But I say to you, ladies and gentlemen, this is the Bible. I don't doubt it. I read it. I learn something every time I read it. I read it every morning. I read Psalms every morning. I read Proverbs every morning. And my answer came this morning, while I was watching all of you online, and many of you are getting a little thin on top. Pastor Jonathan?
Well, we're going to get new cameras that'll fix it.
But I watched you from above, and my answer came through the songs you sang. My answer has came through when you recited the Nicene Creed. And I think, friends, it's time to look for a new denomination. I think it's time to look for new leadership. I think we need to move forward with the question.
Any other comments or thoughts?
For those of you aren't sure, the microphone's being disinfected between speakers here.
All right, so Elaine asked that I share her thoughts with you about my opinion. And to this point, I've had an opinion. It's changed a little bit over the course of time. I probably have as much understanding as anyone here, more than some, maybe not as much as some. And I prepared some thoughts, as you would expect I would. And I share this. First of all, I'm nothing more than a forgiven sinner. That's all I am. I have one vote in this thing. I was baptized into Methodist Church when I was three months old. I was confirmed in this UMC when I was 13. Was married in another UMC when I was 22. And I was married to my current wife. Oh, she's upstairs. There you go. Yeah. When I was, when I was 39 at this altar. So I've been Methodist or United Methodist all my life. It's the only denomination I've ever known. And in this United Methodist Church, I have had the opportunity to grow in knowledge and in service. When asked where I stand on the theological issues, I don't think you're going to have any surprises. On the authority of Scripture, many of you know that over a 20-year period, I did 11 long-term Bible studies, 16 short-term studies. Additionally, I've done 80 weekly video devotions and understanding Scripture. You shouldn't have to ask where I stand to the authority of Scripture, as God's Word. I believe that that's the case. On who Jesus is, I believe Jesus Christ is the Son of God, redeemed the sin of the world at his crucifixion, was resurrected three days later. Our personal sin, I know I've sinned. I need redemption. By my free will, I have accepted Jesus' action of redemption at the cross by faith. On sanctification, while some have worked toward becoming Christ-like and may have achieved human holiness, it's not something I've achieved, though I believe Christ's example is worthy of working to achieve. On marriage, I believe God's plan for our marriage is a relationship between one man and one woman with expected sexual fidelity to one another. So my beliefs are consistent with the stated fundamental beliefs of the United Methodist Church. Challenge is that there are those within the United Methodist Church, laity, clergy, bishops, who are not teaching in a way that are consistent with these beliefs and this doctrine, which we have agreed to. We've made a covenantal agreement, as I mentioned earlier, to uphold these, and that those that don't do that and teach inconsistently are doing so without any accountability. That's led to a wide variety of beliefs within the intent of the United Methodist Church. I believe some of these beliefs presented by clergy have been changed in an effort to make people feel more comfortable with the scriptural message, so as not to offend somebody. Folks, I've read the Bible quite a bit. I've read a lot about what Jesus had to say. I found that he often brings comfort. But I never read that Jesus comes to make us comfortable. Let me say that again. He comes to bring us comfort, but he didn't come to make us comfortable. If you read the Scripture, you will be personally challenged over and over and over again. Others will say that Scripture is not something that we intend to interpret to conform to us. Rather, we interpret it so that we may be inspired to be more Christ-like. That is, we work to conform to the scriptural teachings, no matter how hard, no matter how uncomfortable they are, not conform the Scripture to what makes us comfortable. A friend of mine has said, Jesus loves you enough to meet you where you are. That's comforting. But he goes on to say that Jesus also loves you enough to not leave you where you were. That's about helping you and me to change. And change is not always comfortable. I think it can be argued that some UMC clergy are preaching a message that's not scriptural and challenging, but a message of simply trying to make folks comfortable. Do we need to take a vote about disaffiliation from the United Methodist Church? I believe we do. Regardless of where you stand on the issues, I believe you need to know where this group of Christ followers stands on these issues. There may be a large majority of people who may stand strongly to disaffiliate with the United Methodist Church. Those who stand for staying in the United Methodist Church need to know that. Likewise, there may be a large majority of people who stand strongly for staying in the United Methodist Church. Folks who would choose to disaffiliate need to know that as well. This group of Christ followers needs to decide what they're going to stand for. The good news is that each of you have a voice and a vote. Now, that news can be scary. And it's because it's something you need to decide what you stand for. And for many of us, we haven't had to make a public decision about that before. If we decide to call a church conference for the purpose of voting to disaffiliate, I will tell you, my vote will be cast to disaffiliate. The second question is, do I think we should become an independent church, part of another denomination, part of the Global Methodist Church? It's a challenging question. And because I've really not properly researched all the other denominations, I'm going to exclude that option for the moment. First, pros for going independent. Nobody's telling you what your beliefs are. You get to make the call. Your missional decisions are entirely your own. There's no hierarchy to pay money to, no apportionments. The church decides how to use all the money. You get full choice surrounding selecting your pastor. Based on what we heard, we may attract other churches to merge. Negatives for an independent choice, every decision on belief, as I said before, has the potential for alienating someone. In these conversations, we've had strong opinions about the inclusion of the queer community. An independent would need to make a decision on that topic, as well as scriptural authority, Jesus' role, other sexual sin, domestic abuse, alcohol, gambling, and abortion. Other negatives for independent choice, there's no support system really outside the congregation, unless it's hired by the congregation. You're totally responsible for finding a pastor that fits within your beliefs that you hold. I see it as a lot of work. Positives for the Global Methodist, it's a modified hierarchical structure, similar to what we're accustomed to, but leaner and more focused. I really believe that folks in the Global Methodist Church for the next years will be committed to the leaner structure, accountability for teaching the doctrine, and more apportionments. What that looks like in a decade or a decade and a half, I have no idea. Also positives for Global Methodist Church is it's a modified pastor call that will give churches more input into the pastor than the United Methodist Church, but not the full responsibility of the independent church. Also, there'll be a more unified commitment to the doctrine than it is in the United Methodist Church currently. Negatives for the Global Methodist, as we've said, there's been a convening conference, so a lot of it we take on faith. So the policies and procedures are yet to be seen, and there is no track record. It's unknown how, right now, how big the pastor pool will be. It's unknown how many churches would move that way. Frankly, I don't feel nearly as strongly about one of these choices versus the other. Okay? While I feel strongly to disaffiliate, I don't feel strongly about which choice we make, because as some of you have said, maybe we just don't have enough information, and we would need to think it through a little further. Personally, I see an independent church choice as an incredible amount of work. Honestly, friends, I'm not up for it. I think it's fair to say I don't have a history in this family of avoiding work or responsibility. But if that's the right choice, I will trust God will raise up the right people to do the work that's needed redone, to move that direction. At this moment, if I was going to vote, I would probably vote global, but that may change. So, and as I said in the beginning, anyone's opinion here should not be your driving opinion about which direction you should go. As I've said before, to all of you, God loves you, and so do I. But those are my thoughts about what's going on. And I appreciate your kind, some of your kind comments about leadership. It's, yeah, I wouldn't have signed up for this if I hadn't known it, but it's just the way it is. And it's okay. And I appreciate your love and grace, and tolerance, and cooperation. So thank you for all that. So I believe we've gone through all the statements and thoughts. We moved into the period of plan. We have a motion on the floor to move forward. Now, Brad, as you stated that, my understanding is we would ask for that, and it would occur in a 120-day window, is the intent of your motion. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. All right. So conversation about this motion. And let me just preface it by saying this way. I was prepared in case there was a decision to take a vote. We will do a secret ballot. This ballot is a majority vote. This would be a vote to instruct the ministry table. It would be a recommendation to ministry table, that it's the feeling of this body, that it's time to take a vote on disaffiliation. That doesn't mean we can't have further conversations between now and a time that we would have a vote. But this is to instruct the ministry table to move forward. They meet, I believe, on September 16th, and we would take a vote then. I would take that message to them. Most of you are sitting in here, you already know that's what's going to happen. But I would officially take that to that body, get official approval, and all a letter would go, probably from Larry and myself, and Pastor Jonathan, saying that this church requests a vote for disaffiliation. So that's what you're voting on at this point. So is the discussion on the motion on the floor? So the question is, that means we would be able to keep the building. If we were to have a vote of disaffiliation, and the vote for disaffiliation passed, two-thirds majority at that time, then you would keep your building in that process. The trust clause is suspended for this season until the end of 2023. That's not the vote today. Now, this is just simply to say, ministry table, we feel as a group of church members, we're ready to take a vote on disaffiliation in the next four months. So, Court? being open until the end of 2023, and points out that we're told and expecting that Bishop Palmer and our district superintendent Bias will be retiring in August of next year. That's what we've been told. And the expectation is that whoever receives appointments in the future will not be as full of grace and as loving in this process as what we've experienced them to be in this process, and that other conferences are not being as loving in this disaffiliation process as West Ohio has been. So just simply a consideration in terms of vote. Other debate on the motion on the floor? Okay, so we're going to move to the vote. If you are not a member of the church, would you just raise your hand? One, two. Okay. So I'm going to invite Gary Henkel, Kathy Fallstik, Tim Stoffer, to do our, manage our vote. So I've got the ballots here, and I've got a summary sheet. And if you would pass out the ballots, collect them, you'll go into the cry room and count them. And that way, we've got three people doing it. I don't think they're related to one another, so that would be good. You know, we don't want any, so we got a fair vote here. And question, Delmar?
But are we skipping one, one step in the process?
No. So all we're doing now is asking, we're taking a vote to ask the ministry table, our administrative council, to contact the district superintendent, that we would like to take a formal church vote to disaffiliate. Does that make sense?
So we, we're going to ignore the one middle step?
Which one?
The one where we decided whether we wanted to go to that. Well, okay.
Right. This, all this is saying is, we'd like to at least have a vote. And so we'll have the vote three months down the road, as to whether we wish to disaffiliate or not. Okay? So.
Does everybody have pencils in the pew in front of you? They're where the little note cards are?
Do we have more of those little pencils?
There's actually another one there.
Does anybody need pencil?
Now, everybody, in keeping with the theme of the message this morning of one, it's one person, one vote, okay? This is not Chicago. We're not digging up dead people. One person, one vote.
Agree means you agree you want to take a vote. Disagree means you do not choose to take a vote at this time.
You don't need to fold them into eight folds, two, one or two folds, is a God's plan, all right? all right? Yeah, no. How do you got six ballots back here? What's up with that? Some I collected. No, over here, Tim.
I just gave her one.
I think they've got questions, Jeff.
Okay, so here's the summary. So, so the votes received, agree, that's it. Just number, number, number. And then, and then just, you guys sign it and give it back to me, and I'll be there.
We need more than two. We can't write up more than 50%. Will you come back?
Sure. It has to be.
Has everybody turned in their ballots?
Number of votes, it has to be the higher number, obviously. Okay. So has everybody received a ballot and everybody cast a ballot that chooses to cast one? Okay, it looks like our counters are finishing up back here. Now, all we do is go sit out in the square, and we wait for white smoke to come out of the.
That's only from somebody's head.
I'll take these.
Oh, but we could be part of that if you wanted to.
Kathy was carrying extra ballots into the counting room.
Very good, thank you. All right, can cast. So these are the unused ballots, so I could fill these. No, you all done with your microphone? I have some campfire songs I could teach you, but you know. Can you hear me? You just don't touch it, it's fine. So my comment about your spouse not speaking for myself, Dr. Lewis, Brad, that comment about not letting your spouse speak for yourself actually came from Elaine, okay? In a private conversation I had with her earlier this week, she said, Brad doesn't always speak for me. So that's why I was just clarifying that. Okay. You may get, you may get to read it with a thump over the top of your head, I don't know. So, all right, the report of the counts. 60 votes were received, 52 agree with a move to, move for disaffiliation, eight disagree. No abstentions. A 50% majority would have been 31 votes. The motion passes. I will carry this to the ministry table. I expect that they will concur. We will move forward with a strategy to vote for disaffiliation. If there's a, I would expect there'll be, obviously, there'll be conversations surrounding this at the ministry table. If the feeling is that we need to hear some further information, I think that's perfectly fine, but we'll take that up at that point in time. I kind of prefaced that earlier by saying, I think some people would say enough meetings. And that's why I thought I was kind of leaning into Vicky's comment, and I beat her to it. So I'm sensitive to that as well, but I just want to be sure. So with that, completing the business I think we had to do at this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Jonathan if he would give us a prayer for the departure home, please.
And thank you, Jeff, once again, for your service to our church here today. Thank you. Just want to share, you do a lot of reflecting in these moments, especially as a pastor. One of the things I remember when I was going in, when I told people in seminary, I said, hey, I'm going to go be a United Methodist pastor. They all looked at me like I was crazy. Because they said, you know what's coming down the track, right? And I said, yes, I do. And we had no clue exactly how it happened, but the simple truth is, you know, you ask yourself in these moments of the heartache that sometimes you feel, and when you look at loved ones, knowing that you may have, choose different paths and that you may go different ways, you always ask yourself, would I have not done it or done it differently? And as I look around this room, the simple truth is, I still would have done it, because I've been so blessed to be with you, no matter what the future holds, but just knowing how much painful this moment is, but still, it was worth it to be with you for these four years, and who knows how much longer. But I love each and every single one of you very much, and I want the best for you. And so let's pray together. Lord, as we come here today, our hearts are both heavy, and our hearts are both hopeful in you. And so, God, as we gather together during this time, we thank you for being with us. We thank you for being able to share our thoughts, our concerns, our worries. We thank you for being able to just make statements of where we think we are. And God, that we're in a church where we can do that as openly as we did today. And the fact that so many tears were shed, when we all realized that maybe we won't be together, because our big longing, Lord, is we love each other, and we love each other deeply. And we want to be together in the future. So, God, we do ask that you continue to guide us in these days. Help us to be wise. Help us to be loving. Help us, again, to cherish each other. And so, God, whatever these days ahead have for us, we continue to listen to your voice. We want to hear and follow your footsteps. We love you, Lord. We praise you. We thank you for your spirit. We thank you for your guidance. And once again, we trust in you. Amen.